Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Wednesday, October 13th, 2021 at 7:00 PM here at O'Neill Middle School. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the District 58's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please go roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Ellison's absent. Member Hannah?
Here.
Member Carrot?
Here.
Member Olchik?
Here.
Member Weiner?
Here.
Member Hughes?
Here. Tonight, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide comment to the board on the later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to comment to please fill out a card and indicate the topic to be addressed. These can be placed in the basket on the table over there to my right. As we are no longer limiting in-person attendance, we will not be taking any remote comments. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment. Starting us off today, we would like to welcome the Student Council of Puffer School to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to welcome up Principal Wazek.
Good evening. Thank you for welcoming us tonight. We have our student council here to introduce themselves and to share a few slides about all the great things that they are doing at Puffer.
Hi, I'm Cody Wilson, one of the treasurers at Puffer, and we do a lot of fundraisers that help our community. For example, we want to ask students to pay $1 where PJs for a local organization know as hope. Noah's Hope is a DG organization that raises money for awareness of bats and cesties. Another one that we did is fundraising monies for the wildfires in California. Those are just some of the fundraisers that we did to help our community. But it's a good thing is that all the money that we raise goes to a good cause in our community and in our school. Now, Puffer, we do a lot of things that help support our community.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Sandridge, and I'm Student Council President at Henry Puffer. We have done a lot of things for our school in the past. Due to COVID, we didn't have student council last year. But this year, I am super excited to have student council. Since this is the beginning of the year, we haven't done much yet. But here are some things that student council did in the past. We have done after-school movies for the primary and intermediate kids. We did a fundraiser for a new water bottle filler. We also helped get a new playground. If you enjoy McDonald's, we have done a McTeacher Night fundraiser. Every year, we also do Red Ribbon Week. These are just some of our ideas that we can do this year. We are hoping to make this an awesome year.
Hello, my name is Madeline Navatney. I'm the Vice President of Student Council. I'm here to talk about spirit days. Spirit days are themed days of the year that we use to get out of the regular school routine. Doing the same thing every day for an entire year can't get boring. So spirit days can help spice it up a bit. They're fun things kids can do to express themselves, like wearing their favorite hat or crazy socks. Spirit days can also show school spirit or make someone smile and laugh. Spirit days are most always when you wear or bring something you usually couldn't school. You have a choice to participate in them or not. Personally, I think spirit days are the best days of the school year. They're very fun. Overall, spirit days are days where the student body can relax and have a good time.
Hi, my name is Wes Sittner, and I am one of the two treasurers for Henry Puffer Student Council. I'm here to talk to you about spirit days that we have had. We have lots, we have had lots of fun spirit days, like the classic PJ day and crazy hair day, the classic ones that most people enjoy. We have other fun spirit days too, like crazy sock day, tie-dye day, western day, stuffed animal day, and hat day. There are many fun, creative spirit days that we have had. Every Friday, we wear Henry Puffer spirit wear or blue and white clothes. The class with the highest percentage of people wearing spirit wear wins a stuffed animal panther for the week. We don't just have spirit days, though. We sometimes have spirit weeks. We do Red Ribbon Week. Everybody gets a red ribbon, and that is coming up at the end of October. We also have fun holiday spirit weeks that don't just last a day. The Student Council has many fun spirit days for Henry Puffer School.
Hi, my name is Brendan Eddington, and I'm Student Council Secretary. I want to make this year a lot better than last year. Some of our goals are having a fish food, a food drive for fish food pantry and having a hat and mitten tree to support our community. We, we also will be having expensive sales along with a book swap. We want to have a way to support our school families who may need extra help during the holidays, maybe by organizing a Thanksgiving basket. This past year is difficult for everyone, so we are also striving to spread happiness and make others feel good about themselves. I hope this year is a better year for school and community. Thank you for allowing us to come and tell a little bit about what we do at Henry Puffer School.
Thank you very much, Student Council. I would like to invite up Janet Sandridge and Amy Clawwitter, our PTA Presidents.
Hello, I am Janet Sandridge, one of the co-presidents of Puffer Hefty PTA. My co-president over there, Amy Clawwitter. Thank you for having us here tonight. The Henry Puffer PTA's mission is to make an impact on each child at our school. And we are very fortunate to have an incredibly generous and active parent community. Our fundraising each year supports a wide variety of programming and events for our students and school community. We contribute to student enrichment initiatives such as find motor kits for our kindergarteners, do page learning labs, year-end events for all of our sixth graders, and assemblies. We host annual events that the entire school looks forward to each year, including a beginning-of-the-year ice cream social, a Halloween event, which last year during COVID, we tried to think outside of the box, and we implemented a drive-through pumpkin display, a winter holiday event, family dances, and a talent show. We support our teachers and show our gratitude with conference time meals, staff appreciation week festivities, and last year, we also held an outdoor hot chocolate bar for our teachers. Lastly, we also support our alumni with a scholarship program each year. Finally, we were very fortunate to also have an amazing parent community come together to establish a separate 501(c)(3) Everybody Plays at Puffer that raised funds for a brand-new playground, which opened last year. This is just a small sampling of the ways in which our PTA supports our school and students. And on behalf of the Puffer PTA in our school, thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you, Janet. Again, thank you for our Student Council representatives for being here and sharing a few things about Puffer. I'd like to share a few highlights about Puffer as well that relate to our strategic plan. And I've put together a video for you to get a visual of how things are going at Henry Puffer.
Greetings from Henry Puffer School. We are excited to share what we've been up to. Because it is evident how much we can accomplish when we work together as a team, this year, our theme at Puffer is Together We Will. I'd like to highlight a few ways we at Puffer are connecting with our community, focusing on learning, and working towards securing the future. We are thrilled to have our Puffer Student Council up and running again this year. And I am so glad our elected students and teacher leaders were able to join us this evening. Our Student Council is preparing for how we can support our school and Downers Grove communities. Students are also excited for our podcast club to return. Students learn many skills in this club, but most importantly, they build connections with and learn from important members of our community. Some individuals our students have interviewed include Dr. John Duffy, psychologist, Drew Cassens, DGN alum and NIU football player, Coach Will Koopish, and Judge Ann Saline Walsh. Additionally, our students in Running Club are preparing for the Jingle Bell Run on November 20th to support the Arthritis Foundation. Our students are led by Coaches Carlson, Coglinis, and Koopish. As we continue our focus on learning at Henry Puffer, I'd like to highlight how we are supporting all of our students and their individual needs. Tied to our school improvement goal for this year, we have implemented a win time for each grade level. Win stands for what I need, and each grade level has win time during their designated intervention block. This is an all-hands-on-deck approach to support students who need intervention support, targeted skill-based small group instruction, and enrichment in reading and writing. Our team of interventionists is doing a book study to ensure that we are implementing and monitoring the success of our win time effectively. Teachers will spend building professional development time devoted to using student data to guide their win time. Take a look at what win looks like so far this year and what people at Puffer are saying about it.
Win time is intervention time for all students, meaning to explore their act and determine what they need. It is a proactive time rather than reactive time, whether it's an extension of a common course standard, enrichment of a common course standard, or an intervention on a scale.
Win time is what I need, all classes have their own teacher. Basically, we go to our teacher and we read them a story and we find text evidence and key detail. I love win time.
I love win block because we get to read interesting books and then again, learn more about the characters and the personalities relating to their actions and reactions.
We are very excited to share two major facility improvements at Henry Puffer. Most of you have seen our amazing new playground. As we've headed into a more typical school year, As we've headed into a more typical school year, our students have absolutely loved recess at the playground. And we appreciate EPAP and all who have supported this project.
They hear it, they are the playground and the slides and the mirror.
My favorite part of the playground is the tape slide. And my second favorite part of the playground is the monitors.
Our new lower level and library are also something we'd like to celebrate with you. Our library team has done a fantastic job at making this space special for our Henry Puffer students. Our newly renovated lower level also houses our art and music room and the District 58 gifted program classrooms. Thank you for supporting the updates to these beautiful learning spaces. I am very proud of the work we are doing at Puffer despite the challenges we've navigated. Our students are worth it. Thank you Board of Education for your support. It's going to be a great year.
So those are a few of the many things that we have going on at Henry Puffer. But again, I just wanted to thank you Board of Education for your support and I look forward to inviting you in person to see our new lower level and library. So thank you.
Thank you, Britta, Janet, the whole PTA and to the student council. It really means a lot to have the student councils back here in the building. It's been a long time for us. So we are so glad to hear you guys present about your schools. So thank you for being here. Listed on tonight's agenda are 22 communications received by the board. Are there any additional communications a board member would like to share at this time? All right. Next up then is our spotlight on our schools. We have a fall data snapshot. So I'd like to welcome Justin Sissel.
Thank you. Tonight, we want to take an initial look at some of our fall benchmarking assessment data. We have a few objectives we'd like to target this evening. First, we want to continue the conversation on the use of data in general and what that looks like at our buildings. Then we also want to talk about how we're going to identify areas of focus for future conversations, not only in the coming weeks, but throughout the coming year. We're going to speak briefly about the path toward key performance indicators. And then really, we're going to take a minute to look at the actual fall district achievement data. We're going to find some areas that are, that are strong, some areas of celebration. We're also going to acknowledge that while we are, many things are back to normal. This is still not a typical year and the past 18 months have had an impact on student achievement. And we want to talk about the ways we're going to both acknowledge that and address it moving forward. So when we talk about fall data in general, the first thing it's, it's, it's worth noting is that three years ago, we opted to eliminate most of the fall benchmarking data altogether. And that really came from a number of well-intentioned thoughts and solid thinking around wanting to maximize instructional time in the fall, recognizing that we have spring data typically and the, the distance between spring and fall marks the time of least instruction. Whereas that spring data set comes after the most possible instruction. And so as we're making instructional decisions for the coming school year, using the spring data to inform that is, is really a, a strong way to be able to hit the ground running with the information that we have. We also know that the last 18 months have been inconsistent and we've had, we've had data gaps. We've had, had data sets that were collected with some anomaly conditions, whether they were remote assessments or different intervals of instruction. We also have recognized that because we didn't do fall assessing in 2019 and because then we, we also missed some assessment periods during the pandemic, we, we really do want to build back up our data sets in District 58 because we never want to be caught in a position where we have to make instructional decisions based on only one data point. We want to make sure that we do build that data over time concept. So this fall data will be able to, to give us a good benchmark for this school year where we started precisely. It helps us to identify some, some trends, also some individual struggling learners and situations like that. And so it's something we'll continue to evaluate. Will we go back to only a winter and spring benchmark period? Will, will we keep the fall benchmark period? That's a conversation that will be ongoing throughout the course of the next year or so. We also know that we've made a commitment to discussing growth alongside achievement. The, the individual achievement at a moment in time for a student is an important piece of information. So too is the amount that that individual student has grown from point A to point B. And so we're in the process of really having conversations at several levels on how will we look at and which growth measures will we identify long-term to measure student success? Two places that those conversations are happening are along the lines of the building our key performance indicators. So the key performance indicators, as you know, are tied to the strategic plan. And those key performance indicators expired at the end of last spring. We are now in the process of developing a new set of those indicators, which really are a, a set of success measurements that we are identifying as a district that we'll look to over the course of several years. So we have the district leadership team who is, has been beginning that conversation. And there's a group that has spun off through that that did some initial work. We also have our curriculum council who spent a lot of time over the past several years talking about another component of our strategic plan that the district leadership team has also begun to talk about. And that's the idea of how we're measuring success in terms of that portrait of a graduate. What do we want a student to resemble when they leave our system? And so as we talk about all these different components together, we've engaged the Ekra Consulting Group to help us with the development of those key performance indicators to help us identify clean and clear and measurable and reasonable targets, reasonable and ambitious targets for those key performance indicators. So we're going to talk much more about that in a couple of weeks. But that really is where the conversation around growth and how we're going to use growth to gauge our students' progress and success over the next several years will be happening. And we're excited to be able to bring that forward a little bit more in two weeks. Again, to be clear, we won't have KPIs in two weeks. We'll have the path to realizing those over the course of the next few months. The other thing to recognize is when we talk about growth, NWA really only gives us certain intervals by which they measure growth. And so if we wanted to use this fall data set as an ending point for growth, the only possible starting point, the way that NWA measures it would be to go all the way back to last fall. And, and for a couple of reasons, we don't really think that's a, a super valuable metric. One is last fall was that all remote administration, a little bit later in the school year, once with, with all of the different things that were happening. We also know historically, last fall was the, was it really an inflated data set in some ways? It's one of the highest set of scores we've seen. And, and a year ago, I had the same conversation with the board to say, let's not overinterpret what this means because there's any number of possibilities as to why that really is kind of an anomaly data set. So the conversation around growth continues, just not as much tonight as we look at this data specifically right now. As a reminder, this fall, we administered several assessments to students. Ames Web Plus is a measurement where we administer a, a set of assessments that measure early literacy and numeracy skills for all students in grades K through one. And then we do mathematics and basically mathematics fluency and reading fluency in grades two through eight until a set of criteria is met. So all second graders in the fall and then selected third through eighth graders receive those assessments. Map, reading and math in grades K through eight. And then we also just last week concluded the fall administration of the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, which as you'll recall is the administration that took the place of the spring 2021 administration. That testing window in the spring was right when we were coming back on site much with, with much closer to full-time. And so we made the decision to push that assessment until this fall. We just completed that with our current fourth through ninth graders. We had about 32% of the current ninth graders who are attending in District 99 that came from Herrick or O'Neill, who completed that assessment and, and much closer to 98, 99% of the students in District 58 currently who completed that assessment. So as we start to look specifically then at the data, the first measurement that we'll show is the Ames Web Early Literacy Set. And so this is, as I mentioned, in kindergarten, this is three assessments that give us an early literacy composite. And so as you look to the screen, the individual assessments are across here. And then far to the right is what's called the Total Early Literacy Composite. And that's the number, that's, that's the overall number. As we look at that, a majority of our students are in the green, which means they are basically tier one students. They're performing well. We have students in yellow and red more than we would typically see. Again, these are students we haven't had in our system yet, with the exception of our Grove Free School students. And so we, this is a first look at kindergarten information that we will continue to watch for. Our hope by the end of the year is to see that green column continue to grow and the red and yellow columns continue to shrink. Similarly, we can look at the early numeracy skills for kindergarten students. And in this area, we have a more typical distribution as we would see in a more typical year of green, yellow and red. However, you know, we, we know that still that's one assessment, one time. And we'll continue to monitor those numbers along with all of the other in-class mathematics assessments that will happen for all of our students. As we look at the early literacy chart for first grade, this is one of the places where we can, we can see a visualization of what is the impact of last, the last 18 months and the learning experiences we've had. You can see between the, the green and the yellow and then over to the red, that number is difficult to see. But that's 42.3% of first graders, based on this single assessment, who would be identified as in need of intensive intervention. Now, a few things have to go along with that. First, it's not entirely surprising to see some of those numbers. And then it reflects the reality that we're seeing in our classrooms. If we think about these first graders, the experiences that they had in kindergarten, the ones that were able to participate fully in our half-day program, didn't even have the option of an Okeep type program. And while Okeep is enrichment and extensive, an extension by nature, it is focused a lot on literacy and poetry and things like that. And so those experiences were missing for our kindergarten students. We're going to, we're going to use a term tonight and throughout the next several months. Rather than learning loss, which is what was debated around last year, we're going to talk about unfinished learning. And that's what we're seeing here. Did learning occur last year for these students who were in kindergarten? Absolutely it did. Did they get as far as they would have in a more typical year? They didn't. We, we know that even if we didn't have a, a stitch of data to, to show right now, we just know by the number of minutes that were available for all of our students last year, they wouldn't have gotten as far if, if we expected that. And so that unfinished learning is going to be reflected in several ways. We also have to take a look at a number like this and say, we would never prepare at the beginning of the year to pull 42% of our students out of their classrooms to provide a support in that way. Some of the students in those 42%, absolutely, that'll be the appropriate way to provide individual support. But for others, we want to make sure that we are taking a look at all of the data we have available and never just one piece. And also thinking about what this means for our core instruction in the classroom. If, if 40 to 50% of our students are below that 50th percentile in a given moment, then we need to think about how that reflects on what we need to do instructionally throughout the day, not just for those individual intervention minutes, which are also important. And so it does, it creates a, a situation that requires some unique approaches and some time to take a step back and think about as teachers, what is, what is the best way we can approach this? And then as an administrative team, how do we best support our teachers through this? And so that conversation will be happening at upcoming grade level meetings in a couple of weeks. We're going to have all of the grade level teachers together for half the day. And we're really going to spend a lot of time working through some of this and learning what has been successful in certain buildings and for certain people and what supports are still needed as we go forward. I know that was a lot of time on one slide.
Justin, can you hear me?
Yes.
So like one, one of the pieces of information that I'd be interested in is how does this compare to other school districts in the area? So you know, 50%, that's jumps out at you right away. And then you get into the 42% and you know, that's great that we're going to have conversations. I guess, how do we kind of put that in perspective versus our peers? Are they seeing that same unfinished learning?
What I, I mean, I can't answer that for every peer district right now, but generally speaking, yes, this is a conversation that's happening in many school districts. Dr. Eckmiller and I were at a seminar a few weeks ago where I would say at least 20 to 25 school districts were represented, talking about this topic in particular. And the conversations were really very similar across the board. It would, you know, we're seeing, yes, definitely, definitely some gaps, some of that unfinished learning. It, it varies in degree and the conversation does revolve around, let's make sure we're, we're not overreacting to any one piece of information. The reality is that this is, this is, this unfinished learning will be regained, but it won't be regained necessarily in five months. It's something we have to take a little bit of a longer view with and make sure that we're continuing down that path. So the short answer is from my anecdotal experience, yes, this is a common conversation. In terms of really getting down to data, it gets difficult to compare districts because we use different measurements. This is one that is not necessarily in use in every district. But generally speaking, I think that this based on the, the, the amount of workshops and things that are being offered to combat these, this unfinished learning, I think it is a pretty common conversation.
I guess in terms of getting into data, i- is it possible to work with Ames to kind of help us in the net? Or you know, is it, can we pick up the phone and, and call the, the districts that, that we know are using this, this assessment? Because I, I think, you know, from my perspective, we're kind of saying, hey, you know, this sucks and we're going to, we're going to work on it in, in other forms. I guess I want to know how much it sucks at this point in time.
We can, we can certainly contact local, the districts around us and see what information we might have that's comparable. You know, Ames is, I don't know that, that Ames will give us local information there. And same way as MAP, they're focused on the national norming. I think that, you know, the, the question of how does it compare to our neighboring districts is a fair one. I think, you know, really, I think as we start to look at some of the rest of the data in the presentation, the other question is how does this compare to where we've been in the past? And what is, what does that mean we have to do about it? So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Greg, if you push the button on your microphone, I should remind everybody, it's, it's less for the room and more for the live stream. Is it green?
Oh, I'm on. How about, you can hear me, Justin?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to dig in here. I, this is, in my opinion, this is a crisis. And I, I think we need to have, I think we need to dig in here, the fact that 42.3% of our, of our first grade students need intensive supports for, for literacy. So before we move on to the next item, there's a couple of things I want to just ask questions about. And I want a couple of commitments from the team here. First of all is we have ESR funds specifically for addressing learning loss or whatever we're calling it now, unfinished learning. So what kind of supports are we going to be offering to these students? But one thing I'd like to, I know that that might be something that we don't have an answer for right away because we're still assessing and we're still figuring out what, what, what we need to target our students with. But I think we need to have a conversation now about how are we going to monitor this as, as a Board of Education and as administrative team? We have about 18 minutes, 18 months to get these kids caught up. These kids can't read by the, by the end of their second grade year. Statistically speaking, they will always be behind. They'll, if kids who are behind at the end of second grade will be behind in high school. So this is, this is a a crisis that is brought upon us by this, this COVID pandemic. And we need, we, we owe it to these, these kids, these families to address this now. So when, when are we going to come back and visit this as a board? When are we going to see, what are, what are our future opportunities to see more data? And how we're serving these students? And what are, what are, when are we going to know the interventions we're going to be providing? And when are we going to be getting feedback as a board about how those interventions are working and what more might we need to commit to these kids? Because this is, this is exactly, I mean, this is, this is a gap that has to be closed. And this is what I, you know, I understand that we need a lot of those ESR funds to plug holes in our, in our, our, our budget last year. That was just a, a leaky bucket of, of money. But now we have kind of righted the ship financially. Now we, now we need to start talking about what resources we can apply to this in order to address this. This is, this is something that, this is, this is very alarming to me.
So thank you. A couple of things, the, the, the next steps in, in when we'll come back to this is later in the presentation. So if I can hold on that until we get down there further. The, you know, the recognition that this single piece of data, this one set of three assessments is, it is, it's a much larger group of, of students in, in the red, in, in tier three, based on this one piece of information. One of the conversations we had at the differentiation and assessment committee a couple of weeks ago, which we'll highlight in two weeks at the work, at the curriculum workshop, was really around the idea that we have made it our mantra for, for many years in District 58 to not make significant instructional decisions based on an individual data point. Now, obviously, I don't want to diminish what's on the screen behind me. It's accurate. It's what's there. When we see how that represents itself in the map assessment, we'll see something a little bit different. Again, not as, as high as we're used to seeing, but not necessarily so much lower than, than what we've seen in the past. So I, I always want to keep all of this in context. I think last fall, we were really excited at the achievement numbers we saw because it was, it was in spite of all this, look what our kids are doing. And that was one data set. And now this is another single data set. So I, my, my caution is always going to be, yes, we have to, we have to make commitments. We have to be accountable to you, to the community and, and frankly, to our staff to support them so that the students do, do. We don't, so that we see these numbers continue to climb in the right direction. We'll be talking a little bit more at the curriculum workshop. And, and these are the kinds of questions that I, I am, I'm looking for tonight from the board. So we can continue to bring that back in terms of, you know, if, and you asked about what intervention? You know, I'm not sure if we're asking what specific or just kind of more of a, I'll talk a little bit more about how we identify that later. And then, you know, as far as reallocating funding, this is the first year we've opened with an additional, I won't get the number right off the top of my head, but, but multiple additional certified staff in intervention roles. You know, we had intended to begin with that last year even before ESR. So that's a locally funded solution. We've already begun. And then we will continue to talk about next, next month. And as the year goes on, what are we, what are we adding in to keep all of this moving? And as the year goes on, what are we, what are we adding in to keep all of this moving? So I, I, I think your, your questions are right on point and I, I appreciate it.
And I, and I appreciate the fact that things I'm, I'm burning, my, my burning questions don't have easy answers right away. But I'm glad to hear that you're, you're, you and I are thinking the same way. I just want to create the expectation that we don't need to have, we need to have semi-regular updates on how this is going and make sure that we're making progress towards getting these kids the, the interventions they need to build up the skills that they have to have by, as soon as possible. So thank you, Justin.
So moving then into the map data, this is the data we, we are accustomed to looking at three times a year. When we look at our average and median percentiles in reading and in math for the, to the right, and then also the achievement percentiles, remember that the national, the national average for NWA is fiftieth percentile. And so again, we're looking at scores when we look at the median scores and the median, and we just start with, with reading. We're all well above the fiftieth percentile there and, and much above the seventieth percentile. And so those are still strong scores. And that, that is something to recognize that there had, and that's why, again, that's where that unfinished learning phrase is, I feel more accurate because this shows us that our kids are still achieving at a very high level based on this assessment. Now, again, first grade, yes, if you look at reading, that reflects what we saw. That's a lower number than we see in the other grade levels and then we've seen. Also, the thing we've talked about before is when you start to see the, the mean or the average pulling lower than the median, that tells us that there are likely more outliers on the lower end of the data set that are pulling the average down away from where that central measure, that, that median kind of, if you cut it right in the middle, looks like. And so again, this continues to reflect, you know, the one, one piece of data confirms another confirms another. We definitely have some, some learners who are going to be struggling right now and who aren't going to be in the place that they typically would be. And yet, when I look at those achievement percentiles in reading and math, we still have to acknowledge that as a school district, we are, we are maintaining a high level of performance in this moment. Do we have growth to look at right now? We don't. And so that's another key piece of the conversation that we'll come back around to in the winter. But alongside recognizing the, the somewhat alarming levels of some of that first grade data, I think we also need to look at some of our, our, our data, especially in the upper grades and say that, you know, there, there was learning last year. And otherwise the students wouldn't be able to achieve at these percentiles in grade levels. And so, you know, it's, it's putting all of it side by side. I think it would be inappropriate to say, look at those percentiles, we're pretty close to where we've always been, let's keep it status quo. But I also think that, that does start to keep us in perspective that we, we are still seeing some strong things from our students. Some of the things that are challenging right now, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in a couple of weeks too, are that none of our students have been in these exact routines and these exact spaces for a long time. And so sometimes we're, you know, we are certainly recognizing that learning loss in, in all ways. And it's impacting our ability to, to move forward in some cases with pacing and with curriculum. And that's again, what we're going to spend a lot of time talking with teachers with in the next few weeks to really help to identify the solutions for that, that are systematically consistent and supportive. Again, just to look at numbers a little bit more, here's our historic reading percentiles. And so remember a couple of things, we don't have that fall 2019 data, that was our choice. And then 2020 began the new end set of NWA norms. So it's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison as we look back across. But if you look back and look at some of the fall seventeen, fall eighteen numbers compared to the fall twenty-one numbers, there are, there are, there's some distance in some cases, but it, it's not twenty percentile points. It's not, it's not quite that far away. And so that tells us that, you know, we, we, yes, we have some, we have a little bit of ground to recover. That's reflected, but it also says that we are, historically, we've seen some of those numbers in a similar spot.
Justin, can you go back to that real quick? I, I want to just highlight one point, especially about our first graders. Greg, absolutely, I one hundred percent agree. First grade is our primary area of focus. It is an issue that we are well aware of and I believe we're well positioned to put in place the proper interventions. I do want to highlight last year that what our kindergarten students had was a half-day experience. This is the work I did in my dissertation, what's the difference between a half-day and a full-day experience? So if you look at some of that 2013 data, when most of our kids were still, you know, back in the half-day experience. But we know typically what you see with kids who are in a half-day experience is, reading is that one lagging indicator that you are going to see. In the data though, what we know is that kids do catch up with the proper interventions. And we see that in place by third grade. I completely agree with everything that you said. Third grade on-target reading by the end of the year in third grade is one of the biggest indicators of student success. And it is something that we pay very, very close attention to and want to make sure that we have all of that in place. So are these numbers surprising? Not necessarily given the pandemic and given that most of our kids had a half-day experience. I think you'll see those numbers rebound in, in first grade with our kids that have a more traditional full-day experience this year. But certainly putting in place those interventions, we do expect to see those numbers continue to creep up and we will continue to monitor that. But this data set really illustrates some of the points that I was making, what we, what we see.
So are you hypothesizing, if you look at first grade, you look at fall of, fall of sixteen, that's, and then fall of eighteen, that's an eight-point jump. That fall of, excuse me, fall of seventeen, that fall of seventeen was the first full cohort of, of kids who went to the, or who had the option, option to go through the OKEP program. Are you hypothesizing that that, that nice little boop, bump there was due in large part to OKEP?
So I want to be careful that we don't draw too many conclusions because I, it, it's tough to ever, you know, we don't have pandemics of the past to compare data to. But what I do know is that when kids have a half-day experience, reading is going to be the number that is likely to trail compared to math, compared to kids that have a full-day experience. But what we know is that kids that have that half-day experience, they're not at a long-term disadvantage. Those kids do pick up with the proper interventions. And so districts that have a half-day versus districts that have a full-day, you really see those wiped out by the time the kids get to third grade, certainly to middle school. And by the time kids get to high school, you don't even have conversations about, you know, were you in a half-day program? Or are you in a full day? Because you see those gaps disappear. So that is certainly one of the just historical pictures that I would paint for the Board of Education that these numbers would line up historically with what we see with kids in a half-day program. To your point, Steve, are we seeing these things in other districts? You know, anecdotally, talking to every superintendent, yes. When we talk about primary students, that is where all of our, our concerns, I don't want to say all of our concerns are centered around because we want to make sure that we hit every other grade level. But certainly, um, the primary students, in particular first grade, is an area of concern because those kids didn't have a typical kindergarten experience either. And so we have to make sure that we're dedicating those resources in the right spot. Sorry, Justin.
No. And so then again, just this slide is the similar historic math percentiles that's available for, for further review. But again, we're, we're seeing, the other thing to remember is that we, we've implemented new math resources actually a couple of times across this slide. And so, you know, we're now in the first time where we've seen students who have had a year of, albeit during a pandemic, the implementation of new math resources. So then often the next question is, okay, so what, what have we done with this information? And so as we looked at the data meetings that happened this fall in each building, one of the first pieces is to really, as I mentioned earlier, look at that, look at the all-student data. Because it, it, we, we, we know that, yes, we need to focus on providing individual and specific supports. But as we look across the board at third-grade data, at fifth-grade data, what, what does it tell us? What state, what areas are we seeing more mastery? What areas are we seeing that we're going to need to put some more emphasis onto in the coming year? And how does that inform our instruction? And so we, we ask the, the, the grade level teams to emerge from those meetings with some commitments to, do we have to make any changes to our core instruction? Are we going to add in something that may have previously been more of a tier-two type of intervention into our core for all students so that we continue to see the impact of that? And then do we need to look at extension and enrichment opportunities as well? Because we have to remember that amidst some of the data that might show us a few more outliers on the, the lower end of the achievement spectrum, we still have a number of students who need to be challenged and enriched at the very high end of the spectrum this year and every year. So that, that conversation around what does the data mean for us at tier one for all students is an important one that we are ensuring that's happening at every building. We then look at the students who are in tier two and tier three. And this is where we make those decisions as to, okay, looking at the, the data we have right now, but also where we have some spring data to look back at and things like that. What decisions are we making for those students? Are we providing supports where we're pulling them out of class for a while to do some intensive intervention? You saw some examples of that in, in the Henry Puffer video early tonight. Are we adding some support within the classroom? And, and what is all of that going to look like and who is going to support it? And so that's that whole team of, of people that provide student support in a variety of ways. They can be reading specialists, interventionists, resource teachers, EL teachers. Who, who are the adults that are going to help support the students that need it most? And then Greg, to one of your questions, how will we know? How will we monitor that? What's the interval at which we come back? Typically, that interval is the winter, winter benchmarking period, which would be early January. But we also have progress monitoring in place for those individual and small group student interventions so that we can see over the course of time what that looks like. You know, it's hard to believe, but there's really only eight to twelve weeks of instructional time between now and that January benchmarking period. And then that is the appropriate amount of time to see is what we're doing, working? Has it started to show in student progress data at that point? Another piece that really touches both on tier one and tier two and three is the school improvement planning process. And we're going to talk much more about this at the curriculum workshop as well. But this is where the building instructional leadership teams made up of staff and administration, take a look at all of the available data and really look across the board at what are our areas of need for this building in particular? And they go through what's called a root cause analysis process, where we really keep asking the question, why? Until we get to a really confident place of saying, okay, it's not just, we're looking at one set of data. We've collected a lot more information and we're confident that this is an area for growth and here's how we're going to target it. And so one of the really exciting things that you're going to see in the school improvement plans that we'll present in a couple of weeks is specific strategies and activities that will be happening building-wide. So, you know, one of the questions we get often is, well, what's working in this building or that building or in this grade level and that grade level? And the more different things you're trying, sometimes the more difficult it is to identify which of those things is working or not working. And so this process really asks us to focus in on something very specific at each building so we can see the effects of that. So I'm excited to talk more about the school improvement planning process next or in two weeks. And then finally, just looking ahead. So that curriculum workshop is, is going, is, the agenda is getting lengthy, but we're going to work to, to speak efficiently and focus on all of these topics. But we're going to talk about the SIP plans. We're going to talk more about the process toward developing our key performance indicators. We're going to spend some time talking about the Illinois School Report Card, which we always do at that time. Although realistically, our school report card is going to be primarily demographic data because the IAR and all that state assessment data won't be in yet by the time the report cards are released. So instead, we're going to take some of that time to look, take a look back at some of the historic data kind of with a lens of equity and what that has looked like. I want to update the board and the community on each of our district committees, all of them, but one will have met by the curriculum workshop. And so we'll be able to talk just briefly about the goals for those committee over the course of the year. And then we want to talk a little bit about our equity audit and the timeline for that, what that's going to look like. And then finally, a brief update on instructional coaching in District Fifty-Eight and some of the changes we've made going into this year in the way we are utilizing that resource. And then Greg, to your point, our next organic checkpoint would be the February board meeting, at which, which seems again, like a long ways away, but we have the January benchmarking period, which is when we will get all of this information again on all of our students. And I was intending on using a similar format where in the February business meeting, we would have a snapshot of the data, just kind of a brief overview of where we are. And then we could generate the kinds of questions to come back in a couple of weeks and say, okay, what else do we want to know as we look a little further into that winter data? And so similarly, that's the end of the, the presentation here. But if there are additional pieces, and I know member Harris, you've shared some, and number Olchek, you've shared some that you would like to see highlighted either in a couple of weeks at the curriculum workshop or between now and February, we would, we would love to hear those, that we can make sure we prepare and present that information.
Thank you, Mr. Sissel. I, I, I want to state something here on top of what Vice President Harris and Member Olchek mentioned earlier. And I think that we understand what we came out of. And, and I think that we probably can all agree anecdotally, there's probably a lot of school districts having this question. And that's why I think if, if this was a typical year, I think we would be having a question and how do we fix our systems in place for the long term? And we probably have to have some of those questions. I think there's some long-term fixes that we want to make. But on top of that, and, and this has to be something that we have to be agile with and we have to do it early on in the year and adapt if we need to. It's how do we use those individual resources in a unique way to close gaps much quicker than we, we typically would? And we're looking at that and some of that stuff, I know that first grade is one of those years that we do get a widespread of, of degree of, of ability. And those gaps tend to get closed because not, not all kids go into our kindergarten program or whatever it might be. Some kids are half-day, some kids are full-day, whatever it might be. But I think one of the things that I'd like to really see and I know is how do we intend to utilize some of these resources to, to close gaps on a quicker scale than, than we typically would to start making up for what was a very unique year? Because to what Greg said earlier, there is a point that if you struggle with reading and stuff, that it, that it really begins to tear down every aspect of your education. It, it becomes harder to do math or get through social studies or science if you're struggling with your literacy. And so it's, it's a huge gap that we want to make sure we close in. And it doesn't hurt us to start working on that now and then come back in, in February and find out that these kids weren't used to taking these tests and it was a unique environment and kids were, and maybe the, we weren't as far off. But it's more dangerous for us to take the risk of saying, well, there might be some anomalies in here. And, and by the time we get to February, just like you were saying, February is going to get here quicker than we could possibly imagine. Once we hit February, June's going to be here quicker than we can possibly imagine as well. So I, I'd really like to see how we're using some of these new positions and stuff to start identifying that and really start honing in on, on closing some of these core gaps that we have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to bring some of that back, certainly. I, I also, I, I want to be careful that I didn't paint a picture that nothing is happening now. You know, all of those fields, I mean, because there is, at every building, there have been deliberate, thoughtful plans and schedules and, and utilization of those resources. I think to your point, we are all interested in looking at the efficacy of those additional positions. And are they working in the current configuration and are they supporting our students? But, but yes, you know, the kind of the, what are we doing now to accelerate the, the closing of those gaps? I think is, is a very timely conversation.
Justin, I'll echo the sentiments already shared, but the thing that I'll add that's new for the question is a question about, when we do winter benchmark, what will we be looking at? Obviously, we'll, I'm guessing we'll have the winter map cycle. But will we also get AIMS web cycles in there as well? What else are you planning to share at that time?
Really, the, the winter benchmark sets will be exactly what we did in the fall. So it'll be map, math and reading for K-eight. It'll be the early literacy and early numeracy for K-one. And then the oral reading fluency and the math computation assessment for students in grades three through eight, who are basically, those are students who are showing a little lower achievement percentiles where we would then continue with that additional more targeted assessment. So it'll be the same set and we'll have an immediate comparison from fall to winter.
Got it, that's helpful, thanks. I was going to ask for that comparison. It's helpful when we see map data side by side. I'm not sure if AIMS web does the same thing, but it'd be helpful to see that in the, in February to see how much is the gap closing? And then the other comparison that I'd like to see, I think this is possible, is how did we compare previous first grade cohorts to previous first grade cohorts midway through the year? To understand, to Greg's point, have we closed the gap to where we have been previously? And are we talking about a unique crisis in this moment? Or are we now talking about how do we continue to grow? Because any, any percentage of students that are not at where they need to be is, is always a problem.
Yep, absolutely. We, we can, we can look back again, there are some gaps in our data sets due to COVID and everything else. But wherever we can pull a clean previous year of data to say, here was fall to winter in a typical year, here's fall to winter in this year, and what does that look like for us?
Thank you.
Justin, um, might it be possible, and maybe this isn't the already considering at, potentially at the October workshop, the February meeting and the February workshop, having some of the interventionists come to share some of the kind of day-to-day specifics that they're doing in the schools to number one, identify students who need these additional supports? And then what are some of those activities? What are some of the, the resources, the things that they're doing specifically to attempt to address some of the unfinished learning? I think that might be beneficial for us to kind of get that like real-world approach as opposed to just numbers on the chart. Like I'm just not a huge standardized test data person. I recognize this is a, a problem that we need to address. But I would like to hear more of the, what are the boots on the ground actually doing day-to-day in the schools, in the classrooms? As opposed to just saying, well, what did the test tell us at the end? So that might be something that I think could be helpful to everyone to feel like, yes, the work that is happening is effective. And they can perhaps even kind of speak anecdotally about, you know, particular students, obviously without sharing any confidential information or anything like that, but just say, oh, okay, I had student A and in the fall, they were here and here's what I was working on with them. And then we built and we built and we built and, and look what they've done now. Things like that just to help us really see like in the real world, what does this look like?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. The February workshop is typically the time when we do much more of that. Here is what a learning experience looks like in District Fifty-Eight, where we've sometimes gone into classrooms and had teachers present and things like that. So that would be a really natural time to have that happen. And I think that would be the point at which we'd be able to say exactly what you just said. We started here in October and, oh my goodness, look what happened. Or we weren't seeing what we thought we would, wanted to see. And so we made a change to, to work through that. So I think that piece- So I think that piece of it is, is more likely a February conversation, if you're comfortable with that. But I think we could also bring in a little of the, you know, a couple of, here are some real life examples of what's happening now, perhaps at October. I'm just, I'm hedging on October because that list is already really long. But I think we might be able to fit some of that into some of the October conversations.
Thank you.
I know we need to have a broader question on the KPIs that we're going to be using and, and sort of, how do we close the gap in making sure we're looking at data prior to us really going out and re-engaging in a, a new full strategic plan? What do you see is, is the timeline of those conversations? I know DLT has been, been talking about that already. I know you're working with some of this together. So I, I'm seeing this as you kind of getting some preliminary so that you're able to put some recommendations to us for a larger conversation to eventually then go back to the DLT team to build it out in more detail. Is that accurate? And, and you see a trajectory on timeline for that, for our more broader KPIs?
Yeah, so we have a, we have a meeting with the Curriculum Council on Monday, the 18th, in which we're going to really kind of try to coalesce a bit around the portrait of a graduate work. We've done some of it already. We have a, James and I have a call with the ECR consultant on Tuesday, the 19th. All of that leading up to my hope is that at the curriculum workshop on the 25th, I can give you that timeline with, with a lot more clarity in terms of how we're going to do it. Cause in our initial talks with, with John Gata from ECR, there's a few different ways we can approach this. But as I, as I alluded to earlier, his recommendation is really to bring together all of the different conversations around student success and kind of do it all at once. So that we don't have a DLT conversation, a curriculum conversation, a board conversation, and end up with disparate desires and how we're going to measure student success. And so this is, that's really the timing of all of this is we want to, we want to bring that together and be able to outline who is the group that's having the conversation? And then how does that get to DLT and to the board? And how can we do that? And how much analysis are we going to ask the ECR group to do for us in terms of finding goals that are both rigorous and reasonable for the next four to five years? So my, 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 my shorter answer is a week and a half from now, I can give you a much better look at what that timeline is going to be.
That's perfect. One of the things though, even though we're not fully there yet, I think that we've seen consistently from the board is, is a desire to have a broader look at growth. I understand that last fall was, was not something that's easy for us to do that with. That will be something though, that we should be able to incorporate when we come back in February. Look at a more solid review of growth.
Yes, we'll have, well, February's conversations will definitely include growth. And really the conversations around KPIs or KPIs, excuse me, are exactly that. Which growth measurements do we want to consistently use as we're looking through this? Cause there are a lot of options and we've used them in different ways in the past. It may be that we determine at some point, fall to fall is a desirable growth measure in a, in a more typical year. And so that's exactly that'll, that'll, that should all again be happening around the same time. So in February, we're having conversations around actual growth in the moment. And then what, you know, how we want to use that going forward, long-term.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to move on to reports to the board. First up is the superintendent report with Dr. Russell.
Thank you. First, I want to echo what Board President Hugh said about how great it was to have our students back. It's those little things that really make a difference. And so I want to thank the Puffer PTA, the Puffer Administration, the teachers that were here this evening. But most especially, I want to thank our students. I know many of them left, but we are very proud of them and can't thank them enough. And we also want to support or thank our BNG department for the work that they did at Puffer over the summer. A lot of that had to be done due to asbestos abatement, but they did a really great job and transformed that lower level. So Kevin and your team, thank you very much for all that. Another facility update, last Friday, District 58 completed its move to a new district office located at 2300 Warrenville Road. The district has subleased space from the Airmark Corporation for the next seven years. However, the district does have an early out option in the sublease in the event a shared facility with the Village of Downers Grove comes to fruition, and that is looking very positive at the moment. The new office space houses the office staff members from the Longfellow Center as well as the ASC. For the first time in a very long time, the entire administrative team and support staff are now together. The renovation of the ASC has already begun and we hope to have the work completed by December. When I say already begun, the, the real heavy work starts next week. But obviously with people moving out, they've already started some of that initial work. Once the renovations are completed, the district's technology and maintenance remaining staff will vacate the Longfellow Center, which was recently sold for $4.1 million. Staff and community members that need assistance from the district office should come to the new location on Warrenville Road. All phone extensions as well as email addresses remain the same. When visiting the new district office, individuals should enter through the main door on the west side of the building. Personnel, later on in the agenda, you will see the approval of stipends for extracurricular clubs throughout our schools. Please note that not all positions are finalized at the moment and we anticipate bringing more at the next meeting. Our goal this school year and beyond is to bring clubs and activities back for our students. We want to ensure that every school has the same number of opportunities. So three at each elementary school for clubs and six at each middle school. These clubs are in addition to other offerings like intermurals, student council and safety patrol. I've been asked by board members if there's any possibility of expanding what we're able to offer, given many of our students have missed so many opportunities due to COVID. Historically, our PTAs have found ways to expand the offerings and we didn't, we never want to discourage that. However, we would also like to find ways to increase what we're able to offer at each of our schools in an equitable manner. We do believe that we can offer more opportunities for our students and ESR funds can provide us with that opportunity. Over the next few weeks, we'll work with our district office admin team, principals and our teachers association on this. We will update the board via our weekly updates and subsequent meetings about expanded opportunities for clubs and activities. But we do think we can get to even more, which I, I think all of our kids really need some of those expanded opportunities. In terms of public relations, District 58 received 64 responses to his, to its recent strategic plan council and school board committee recruitment effort. I want to thank Megan Hewitt for all of her hard work in this area. The majority of our applicants were placed on their chosen committee. Due to space constraints, there were a few applicants who were assigned to different groups that had space available. We really try and find a spot for everyone who is willing to serve and we do our very best. If someone isn't happy with, with one of their assignments, we do offer them the opportunity to discuss it with us to see if we can find a better fit. But we're just really so happy with the, the great turnout that we got for these. Also Downers Grove School District would like to thank the Bond Field Express Foundation, a local charity for donating, once again, a thousand dollars to each of our 13 schools. The Bond Field Express Foundation made this donation to help District 58 schools recognize students who demonstrate a love of learning, extra effort and/or good citizenship. So many of you are aware that the Bond Field Express is, is changing names. The Bond Field Express Foundation has done so many great things and they'll continue to do great things until they spend down their reserves. But they have decided to close their foundation. I am proud to report that District 58's foundation, along with Road Runners and the Rotary Club have taken over this race. And so it's going to be called the Grove Express. And we're going to offer that for our community every Thanksgiving and we're very excited about that opportunity. So the race is not going away and it will also be used that funds to help support our students in all of our schools. So we're excited about that. Curriculum and instruction. Over the past week, we've received a few questions regarding a recently published news article focused on Panorama. There's also been TV stories on this. Panorama is a company that provides SEL assessments for students. District 58 does not have a current relationship with Panorama. However, we have had conversations in District 58 for many years around the importance of measuring students' social emotional competencies, which are taught directly in our schools, just as we measure math and reading against nationally normed data. In 2019, prior to the pandemic, we piloted two SEL assessment tools. Panorama was one of them with approximately 350 students district-wide. All families were notified directly of their child's participation and were given the opportunity to exclude their child from this pilot. While Panorama had a data privacy agreement with District 58 in 2019, based on news over the weekend and last week, we reached out this week and have gained verbal confirmation that none of our pilot students' data was shared outside of Panorama. All of the work since that pilot was paused due to the pandemic. We will continue to provide updates on the current working goals of the SEL Curricular Audit Committee at the curriculum workshop later this month and beyond. Again, we do believe there's value in understanding how well our students are learning the skills taught in SEL that are aligned with current state goals, just as you do in other curricular areas. However, we are extremely aware of the need for student data privacy. Our goal is to balance these two priorities. Certainly any future conversations regarding SEL assessments for our students will take place at the board level in public. And we will not move forward with any assessment until we really would, would take that in front of the board and make a recommendation. We don't know where we're going to be with this, but I wanted to make sure that the public understood where we are with this and where we're not with this. And we have had that conversation at the board level before, which is why we decided not to move forward at that time. Terms of technology. The Power School outage that impacted registration for parent teacher conference registration is unacceptable. While this was a failure of vendor-operated infrastructure and technology, the district is responsible for ensuring that our vendors are able to meet our standards. Considering that we've had two consecutive outages on events where large volumes of families are attempting to access our Power School simultaneously, it's clear the Power School has not been able to meet our standards. So the two events I'm talking about are teacher assignments earlier this year and then now with parent teacher conferences. But our parents were experiencing when they logged in to get the information was either being kicked off, slow responses and not being able to finish their tasks. That is unacceptable. We are not pleased with that and we are taking action to move forward. This came though, we have had experiences with Power School where we've done very similar things and it has been successful as well in the past. And so Dr. Ike Miller is working very closely with Power School. And if they cannot commit to making this right, we will move away from that particular tool for these things because our parents and our students deserve a better experience. The buck stops with me as the superintendent. We own this, even though again, it's their servers that caused the problem. We don't want this experience to keep happening to our families. Parents deserve to be able to log in and have a good experience. So in the end, again, the technology department is committed to ensuring that family access events are more successful in the future. If Power School is unable to support this, the district will seek other tools, solutions and strategies to meet the needs of our community. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Any questions or comments on any of those topics?
Yeah.
Could you speak to what are the three clubs or activities we hope to be the minimum that each of our schools are offered?
Yeah, so the clubs and activities are going to vary by school. And so the first thing that we offer at all of our schools, as I, I shared before, is at the elementary school, we have, you know, intermurals, student council and safety patrol. So those are consistent across all of our elementary schools. We then provide an opportunity for three additional clubs. And currently that is at the discretion of all of our schools. And so if a teacher, like when I worked here at O'Neill, I ran a newspaper club. And so I would put out to the students, if anybody's interested in joining the school newspaper, we meet, you know, here and here's the frequency. Herrick may or may not have had a newspaper at that time. So the clubs are, we define the number, but they can look different from school to school. What we want to continue to move forward with as a district is serving our kids to see what their interests are in design clubs around their interests, not necessarily what our interests are as adults. The first step though, post pandemic was to making sure that we're providing those consistent opportunities in all of our elementary schools and our middle schools. Now we want to take the next step, which is how do we know exactly what the students are looking for? And how do we design clubs around their needs? Does that answer that?
Yeah, the process makes sense. What's the timeline for how we go about doing that?
Yeah, so the timeline right now is first and foremost, we're getting those clubs up in all of our schools and you'll start to see those approvals in the stipend list. As we move forward into subsequent years, we're adding additional clubs. That's where we really want to start to gauge student interest. We want to talk with our teachers and our principals about how we can improve this process year after year after year.
So taking that one step further, should we be, should parents expect to see soon in like backpack folders, otherwise an opportunity to sign up for clubs at their school?
Yeah, so thank you for that. That's exactly what parents should start seeing. Once these get approved, we can start the clubs up and running and you will start to see that in all of our schools.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Dr. Russell?
Yeah.
Oh, I couldn't get my mic to work. Thank you so much for kind of fleshing out the stipend thing. I guess I have two questions. One is we talked in, in your report, you talked about sometimes the PTA had clubs and stuff. Because I have only a middle schooler, I, I don't know, and I don't go in the building. Could, could you let me know, are the PTAs allowed to have things in the buildings now?
Yeah, so thank you. That's another great clarifying question. So one of the things as we started this school year off under the coronavirus restrictions, we wanted to go slow before we completely opened everything up. So we started off first and foremost by opening up to Champions. And so Champions was able to gain immediate access because that's a need for our families for childcare purposes. We then opened it up to our PTAs and allowed our PTAs to have meetings inside of the schools. Some PTAs though have elected to continue virtual because they get better attendance and they feel that that works better for them. So certainly we're not going to dictate to a PTA how they should have their meetings. What we then said is once we start, and also the other group that's tied to the school district is the Downers Grove Park District. We have an intergovernmental agreement with the park district where they cut our grass and we allow them use of our facilities. And so we wanted to honor that intergovernmental agreement. So the park district has that access both inside and outside. When October rolled around, we wanted to fully open our schools back up to a typical school year. And so now what we have in our buildings is those outside groups, whether they're PTA sponsor groups or whether they're a rental, now have access to our facilities so long as they're in compliance with the COVID restrictions that were under from the state of Illinois. So to answer your question, the buildings are fully open and we can resume all the activities that we used to do as long as we're following mandated restrictions.
I appreciate the administration's attention to this, given the past year and a half. I, I know for myself, I am able to provide enrichment activities and such for my kids. But not everyone is able to or has the, the bandwidth to do that. And so these after-school opportunities are very important to me for the students to have extra time outside of sitting in a classroom and just doing math or English or whatever subject they're working on. So, um, and the fact that the buildings are starting to open up, as you say, that will provide maybe some more opportunities. I know there's lots of groups and PTAs want to figure out what they can do. And so that is a game changer, in my opinion, if those kinds of clubs are able to go back in the building and provide after-school enrichment activities for the kids to connect with their peers.
I want to thank our PTA, you know, as the Puffer Group talked about last year, just the outside of the box creativity that they've had. But coming to the school itself is so important on, on just so many levels. It builds that sense of community and it's something that we want to continue to foster. And what we're seeing is that we can run these events successfully in our school. You know, obviously following the mitigations that we have to, but we're very excited to have everything back up and running for our elementary parents. I know Halloween parties are always an exciting time as well. Those will be back this year. There, it sounds like a little thing, but those are big things to get back to that sense of normalcy. And so we're, we're very happy about that.
And I'm glad that we're able to maybe expand if possible, using some of those funds, other clubs. And I think I've mentioned to you before, if there's a school that has three clubs that are typical in a year, it kind of squashes any innovation or, or I can't think of the word I'm looking for, of a, of a new group to, or a new club to start up to meet the needs of the students at the time. So that way it will eliminate having to pick who, what clubs can happen if, if we have, if we're open to that a little bit.
Yeah, so a, a couple of points to piggyback off on that. That's where I really think driving at what the students are looking for is very, very important, right? Cause sometimes as adults, we think we know, but we want to make sure that the students have a voice in that. Cause we know when students have a voice and choice, they're, they're just so much more involved in that process. The second thing is with our PTAs, we are so very grateful of our PTAs and they provide so many wonderful opportunities. But we don't just want to depend on that. We want to, as a school district, offer these as well and, and continue to build on that. So that's where, you know, using some of these ESR funds, I think can really help expand our offerings and not just rely on the PTAs. Because then you can get into a lot of discrepancies between buildings about this PTA can do this while other PTAs can't.
Correct. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Next up is our monthly business and treasures report with Todd Dreifah.
My voice is a result of the dust of the move. You have your year-to-date report. Things are progressing. This is the time when we're, you know, bringing in those, the revenue piece. Expenses are trailing just a little bit. What's interesting is the transportation firms have been so busy working on everything. We are asking to try to get the bills in and they just haven't had time to, to get them in. You have a, a bill on You have a bill on this month's list, but certainly not what we normally see in a normal year. So at some point in the next month, meeting or two, you're going to see a rather large transportation bill to catch up those expenses. We're glad to pay them as soon as they get us the bill and do so. There's a few reports on, I want to talk about outside of the year to date report. There's two information items. One is, there's been questions about SIR funds and how we're using those funds. Those came in three waves. The CARES Act, the SIR two and then SIR three. By and large, the majority of that money is most, almost all of the first year, first two cycles are spent. That was to help cover costs that we incurred through the pandemic, PPE. We still have rental facility, rental storage outside of the buildings for those items that we had to take out. The tents so that we had those masks breaks, but also a huge amount of salaries to have the lunches when we came back in the spring of last year and to have the supervision and the structure that we did. That was a huge expense. Going forward with this second series, obviously those expenses, but then also the interventionists and looking at learning loss. There's a designation that certain 20% must be spent on learning loss. But we certainly are gearing towards and looking to make sure that we can use those funds, as much of those funds in the next two fiscal years to help accommodate and work through those those things and focus on that. We do not have the funds like some school districts who received significant dollars where they're spending them on capital. It is, the SIR funds were tied to the amount of Title I funds, which is tied to poverty and, you know, and other social economics. We don't have that structure as some other districts do. And so we didn't receive the level of funding that some districts did, who are now looking and working through HVAC updates and things like that. The other information item is, this is the, October is the time we start actually on fiscal year 23. It's kind of our beginning piece for the next fiscal year and that starts with the tax levy discussion. Next month's meeting, we will bring a levy recommendation to the board for approval. The two big factors that drive what we are under the tax cap or the property tax extension limitation law is CPI and new property. CPI for this next year is 1.4%. That gives us $833,000. The new property number, which we don't technically get until well after we make the request, we understand, we get the the actual number in March, will be substantial because the downtown TIF has come off and we put on the tax rolls for the first time in 23 years. That means all of the property within the downtown area that has come up and been built and grown over the last 23 years will be accessible to the district for the first time in that time. That will add a 60 million, give or take, in new property to the district, which will be considerable growth for the next year. So that is why we're looking at having to go through and look at a 5% increase in, from the current extension to the levy. Because one, we don't know what the new construction will be, but we know it's going to be somewhere well above 60, 70, maybe 80 million dollars or more. So you have that in a memo. There's one thing I wanted to point out. It's always an interesting piece we kind of track through. Since 2006 to 2020, the district has had $1 billion new, new property. That's in many places a tear down and a replacement and that replacement cost, but it's also industrial, commercial. 83% of it is residential, but it's a substantial amount of reinvestment into the community over that period of time. And so that just is one of those things that we're very fortunate to have that level of, of growth and commitment. So that's just the number I wanted to leave you with tonight. And if there are any questions.
Todd, do you care to speculate how much of an increase in total revenue we should expect in this next budget year? Because of the TIF coming up?
No, I don't care. It's going to be, I mean, I we always want to make sure that we ask, because we're limited and when we get, when, when we're limited, we're limited forever. If you lose that $1,000, we, we don't ever get that back. And given our needs and our structure, you know, we have, we have one, we're very fortunate, have a very low tax rate and very strong tax base. But we don't want to not have that opportunity. So we were looking at that. We always look to see and make sure we, we get where we're at. We budget on the more conservative side. We ask on the higher side and somewhere in there, we end up with, with what we get. It's probably going to be close, close to that 5%. It could be 4.8, 4.9. It'll depend on how much new construction. We didn't expect the new construction. Let me, let me back up. We get some estimates from the treasure, from the assessors and we will have a meeting in the next week or so that District 99 has always hosted. And so we get some sense of what the, what's coming on, but it's never perfect and there are things that get changed between that estimate and the final numbers. There were considerable amount of growth that we didn't, didn't know about this time last year that when we got the finals, we ended up with a lot stronger new property. So you know, we, the long answer of the short, the short answer is it's going to be considerable with that $60 million increment coming off. The question will be is how much more new construction has completed as of January 1st, 2021? And, and, you know, and that is coming on for full for this year. But it will be, if, if we say that 800,000 is 1.4% and we're looking at several, a couple of million dollars in a levy increase, you know, that new property is going to bring in a considerable amount of growth in for the next year. And we should also say that the CPI and in the memo, we look at the trending right now for the following year. The CPI is up considerably this year. As we all know, when we're paid for things. And that will be the determination for the following year. And we're looking at somewhere in about a 4.3, 4.5% increase the following year as well.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you. All right, the policy committee did not meet, but the legislative committee did on September 22nd. Number here, Hannis.
Yes, so we met for our first meeting of the year on the 22nd. Kind of was a good way to just introduce the, our kind of two big items that we do each school year, which is number one, the delegate assembly in November at the AAA conference. And also the legislative breakfast that we host every winter. So we kind of got the ball rolling, talking about some of those topics and just kind of setting the stage for what, what will be coming for the rest of the year. We did briefly talk a little bit about the delegate assembly in November, but we don't yet have all of the recommendations from IASB on the different proposals that the school districts are presenting. So we're just kind of prepping for that and hoping that we get those in soon so that we can potentially have to schedule a special meeting for the legislative committee to talk about those things so we can prepare recommendations for the board and for me as the delegate to take down to the conference in November and cast our district's votes on those things. We spent a little bit of time discussing a potential pad shelter that is going to be housed within our school district and kind of the impact that that will have on the district and specifically ways in which we can ask for additional assistance from our local legislators in making that transition as smooth as possible for the families and students who will be joining us through that. We also talked a little bit about some of the legislative updates from Springfield and things that could be coming down the pike this school year that could impact us as a school district. But mostly, we talked about the legislative breakfast coming up for this school year. And obviously, historically, we've had a really nice in-person breakfast with representatives from all the various schools, local districts, other school boards, community members, things like that, as well as local legislators. And the opportunity to ask them questions and hear their points of view on educational topics, but obviously last year that was not possible. And we did a really nice virtual event that had a lot of pros and cons. And one of the things we talked about was how we could potentially incorporate some of the positive aspects of that virtual format into the in-person format that we're hoping to be able to have this year back again. So that was something that we kind of went over. You know, one of the ideas that we discussed was people really liked that kind of breakout room format where it was a smaller group discussion and people felt like they had a better opportunity to ask questions and have kind of a more of a dialogue with the legislators. And so we were kind of trying to see if there was a way that we could potentially incorporate some of that concept into more of an in-person format, things along those lines. So we'll be flushing that out more throughout the year as we get closer to the breakfast. We also talked about potential dates for legislative breakfast. For now, we've kind of zoned in on January 28th with January 14th as a backup. But obviously that always hinges on the legislative calendars for our local legislators and making sure that they're available to be there and things like that. So that was kind of the gist of the meeting. Like I said, just kind of a get the ball rolling for the year type of stuff. Kevin, did you feel like I missed anything major?
No, I think you hit it all and we're still waiting for that information from the IASB. So as soon as we get that, we'll be able to schedule that. Oh, it came in. Perfect. We have it. So we'll get that out to the legislative members and then Emily, I'll work with you on scheduling that meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, the financial advisory committee did not meet, neither did the district leadership team, but the health and wellness committee did. So Vice President Harris.
Thank you very much. The the committee spent some time looking at data from August. August was another month that was not in the good column. As the board members, my fellow board members will recall from the last meeting when I updated you on July, July was the worst month ever in the history of district in terms of expenditures over revenue. August was, was bad, but not nearly as bad. We were only about $100,000 expenditures over revenue. We're not overreacting to that number as a committee because our stop loss does reset on July 1st. So that's more or less expected. Also, it's August and, you know, what do our teachers do in the, in the last few days of summer? They go in and get all their appointments taken care of. And so they're going to be using their plan, the plan more because they know they're going back to work and won't have the ability to see the doctor as much. So it's, it's, it's nothing that we were too excited about. We need to see how the last four months of the year shake out. But using a conservative trend, we are anticipating to break even, possibly a small deficit for the year of 2021. Later on in the agenda, the Todd's office is recommending the rates for January 1 of 2022. If we do nothing going forward, again, we're projecting a $800,000 deficit for 2022. So the recommendation coming to the board is an 8% increase for three of the plans. That would be the universal PPO. And there are two very small plans, the reduced PPO and the deductible plan. Those would, again, 8% for those three. And then the fourth plan is the HSA plan. That one is, there is no increase recommended for that plan. Even with these, these rate increases for January 1, the one thing I'd like to draw the board's attention to is that we are still anticipating a deficit for 2022 in excess of $200,000. But the reason why that's, that's palatable is because we had such a phenomenal year in 2020, if that's the right word. We just had a very large surplus because of the pandemic. Our members were really going to doctor and using their plan. So it's, it's something that we can absorb. But in my opinion, it's a watch point for us and we need to just keep, keep our eyes on that as we go forward. That's the extent of the report. Anything to add, Todd from the committee or Jane? Okay, then any questions from the board?
All right, thank you. All right, that's the last of our committees. That brings us to the discussion portion. Tonight we have one item. The timing of public information program for a potential, for the potential facilities referendum. So Dr. Russell.
And James, if you don't mind, oh, do you have the clicker? Either or is fine. Hopefully it works from, there we go. So over the summer, we reconvened our citizen task force. Why do we reconvene our citizen task force? Well, we had put a pause on any potential public information or potential referendum because of what happened in March of 2020 when everything slowed down. So we met with the superintendent's community advisory council and we asked them, you know, what are your thoughts? Should we be bringing back this task force? Is it a good time to do that? And overwhelmingly, the community advisory council said, yes, we need to start getting back to normal. We need to start getting these things in. Our buildings are getting older and older and the expenses are piling up. So we brought the task force back together. In this quick presentation is really an overview of what we discussed with the task force. And we said we would then bring that information back to the Board of Education at the October meeting because we do need the board to make a decision tonight on a potential timing for a public information program. The reason why we're saying public information program is it is not a foregone conclusion that the district will go to a referendum. What we have to do is engage our community to make sure that what the citizen task force recommended, which is a great broad spectrum of our community, aligns with where everyone else is. And so this involves lots of information gathering, but in order to do this, we have to backwards map. And there would be two potential elections that we would target for this work. The first one is a unique one. It's a new primary date of June 28th, 2022. The second one is a historical election timing, which is the midterm election of November 8th, 2022. The reason why I say this June date is unique is because of the delay in the census. Illinois pushed their primary back from March to June. We've never had a June election before, so it is a big unknown. So some of the pros of going out in a June election is we have a lot of the materials are ready, ready to go. If you remember, we had them ready to go in March of 2020. Now, of course, some things have changed, but we could certainly hit the ground running. If unsuccessful, you could do a quick turnaround in November of 22. Your highest priority needs get addressed sooner, obviously, the sooner you go out. And you do have a lengthy early voting period from midway or mid-May to late June. Some of the cons in this first one is a huge con. We've never had an election in June. I can't show you historical data. I can't really discuss what we think would happen in a June election because it's never really taken place before. We could still be very much in the pandemic, which could impact those things. And I do believe in a June election, you're going to have fewer voters participating. We've all been around in Downers Grove in the summertime and you've got many people who are on vacation. You've got many people who are at their second homes and there just aren't as many people there to participate. So some of the pros of the November 22 is it's further out. There's potential fewer unknowns in terms of COVID-19. You've got increased opportunities for in-person, right? Which is important. We talked about the value of bringing people together. So as we have some of these community outreach initiatives, you can do more and more in person. You're going to always have a larger voter turnout in a November election, which means you'll have greater participation. Fewer unknowns in terms of what happens in a November election because we have a lot of data on a November election. Voting takes place while school is in session versus after school is let out. Why is that important? Because our families are going to tune into this because they're going to have naturally being part of the school district, the most information. And so we want them to be able to participate. And so we want them to be able to participate and not have to compete with the summer. Here are some cons over November election. If unsuccessful, you really only have about one month to regroup and then we'd have to talk about, do we want to target the consolidated election in April of 23? You always have, the longer you put something out, you, the possibility of slightly higher construction costs. It's difficult to break through the noise of a general election as well. So sometimes that can be a challenge. So here is what, I won't go through each one of these, but here's what it would look like if we targeted June of 22. If you notice right at the top, you've got some action items in October of 2021, which is now. With the November election, you have a little bit more time to get your bearings together and then really target that November election. So when we asked the task force this information this summer, we had a really good conversation. I believe Darren and Tracy were also present at that meeting that was in July as the board representatives. And we talked about all these pros and cons. And there were strong feelings on both. I, I think you have a, a large segment of our community that has said, you know, these buildings have waited so long, it's time to go. Let's not waste any time. But what I would say is the majority of the task force, including Paul Hanley, would recommend the November date. And the reason they would recommend the November date is just with all of the unknowns associated with the June, not knowing what the voter turnout could look like and having the opportunity to have greater partition at the November or participation at the November election, that is where the majority of the task force recommended. That's certainly where Paul is recommending. And as the superintendent, that is in my recommendation to the board later on for the action item. So we have looked at this. This is obviously a brief overview of all of that work. But at the end of the day, I just think there's too many unknowns with the June election, which gives me pause in making that recommendation where the November one, you can see the timeframe here. We have some time to really get everything lined up. And again, do everything according to the plan with plenty of time. So that's what we have there. We're not trying to be coy with the language. We're saying public engagement because it is not a foregone conclusion. We have to hear from our public. We have to go out there and test these things. We have to make sure we engage people to ensure that it aligns with what the task force recommends. So that is the presentation. I know we've gone over this a lot, but are there any questions from the board?
So later on, when we get to action, are we voting to approve your recommendation to go with November? Or are we deciding now which one of the board we're going to go with?
We can decide. He's making a recommendation for November. That November cycle, which means that we would have to make a final kind of call if we wanted to be on that ballot by the, by August. Or we could do it, but it really is, is up to the board at this time. I have a.
Absolutely in favor of November. And if, does anybody else feel like June would be better option?
I guess my perspective is we set up this task force to kind of evaluate that and you know, that's what came back. So you know, as one board member, I don't see any reason why to go against that.
And again, what, what you're voting on is not the final, yes, you're going to referendum later on. What you're voting on is this timeline in front of you based on a potential referendum in November of 22. So I, I do want to make that clear. The board is not voting to go to referendum tonight. What you're doing is you're authorizing me as the superintendent to begin this process targeting November election. We could come to a conclusion later on that we don't think that that is the right path. So Darren is exactly right. Up there where you see August of 22, that's the go or no-go vote, if that makes sense. So right now, we're just teeing it up to get to that decision point.
Hello. I, I, you've said it and you flushed it out with the slides, but as somebody that sat on the task force with Darren, there was pretty rigorous discussion, as Kevin said, about the pros and cons. And I would say that it was overwhelmingly the, the November, as he said. So I concur with everything that he said. And as you said, it's not an absolute. It's just to get the ball rolling.
Well, I think if that's what Paul recommended, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to bring him into this is because he has so much experience and expertise in doing this many, many times. And if he feels like this is the better option, then I would certainly trust that expertise.
Again, I think the key point in the spring too, in this whole process is gathering feedback from the rest of the community. We, we got it from the task force, which allows us to set this timeline in motion. But really, how do our families feel? How do the 70% of people in this town who don't have kiddos in our school feel about this? And, and that is really what I see in the spring, getting that data. And that's where we're really going to start to have some pretty heavy conversations about, should we move forward? What should the amount be? What does this look like? What, what are the various plans? And so again, a lot more to come with this. What we're doing now is preparing for all of these different things, whether it's the mail survey, whether it's the website pages, the, the virtual tours, all of these things. That's the stuff we're starting to get in motion.
This, if, but if we're working towards a November, it also gives us more time for one of the line items here about open houses. And I, I believe that getting as many community members inside buildings to see what's, what, what the state of affairs are will be very important to get information out to the public.
Yeah, I'd like to get people in three spaces as we go through this. I think it is very important that people see the condition of our buildings. I think the outside, the facades of our school look good, but when you come in and you start to see some of the conditions of the inners of our buildings in, in, you know, the electrical and the plumbing and all of those things, I, I do think our public needs to see that. I also think our public needs to see some of the new spaces in our school district at Lester or Pierce Downer that we've been able to add to show them what we can do. And then the final thing that I think our public would love to have the opportunity to see, I know I would like to take people is to 99 in the new spaces that they have there. Granted, a high school district has much different needs than an elementary district, but they can see the work of our architectural firm. They can see the work of the construction companies because we have the same architectural firm as the high school. So being able to see some of the end products of what they're voting for, I think are also very important as well.
And I think not, not, you know, giving a little bit of that extra time, like Tracy was saying, just to make sure that we, we kind of get it right. Do the best, absolute best that we can of presenting this to the community to kind of show them why, why we feel this is something that would just enhance our district so much is, is huge and not rushing that, I think is important. We want to, we want to make sure we, you know, put it out there in such a way that, that we really present the case, you know?
Emily, I want to echo that and take everybody back to, I think it was 2019 when we engaged Paul for the first time. It seems like a very long time ago. One of the things that Paul always emphasizes is that his number one goal is to respect the taxpayers. We go through this and to make sure that, you know, we don't shove something down people's throats, but to make sure that we really engage with them, hear what they have to say and make the necessary adjustments along the way. I don't think any of us are interested, certainly not myself as a superintendent or board members of just pushing something through for the sake of pushing it through. We want to make sure that we're successful. And the way we get successful is we listen to what our community wants to see in their schools, what they expect in 2021 for the children in District 58.
Any other comments or questions? All right. And later on in the agenda, in the agenda, we will be looking to be on the path forward to the November 8th, 2022 election, which really kind of kicks everything off in January, February of next calendar year. This is the opportunity now for public comment. This is an opportunity for the audience to share public comment with the board, but is not intended to be a time for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. So I'm going to do a last call for cards. At this point, I don't have any. That's no public comment tonight. Okay. All right. Then the first up, first action item up is the approval of minutes. Are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? If not, then is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13th, 2021 regular meeting as presented?
So move.
Second.
Melissa, we please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member, uh, member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the minutes of the September 13th, 2021 regular meeting as presented. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 27th, 2021 special meeting as presented?
So move.
Second.
Melissa, we please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the minutes of the September 27th, 2021 special meeting as presented. Next up is our consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? Right? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report and financial statements consisting of the list of bills and summary as presented in the packet of materials?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Melissa, we please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. All right. Couple of action items tonight. Approval of the timing of public information program for a potential facilities referendum. Is there a motion to pursue a public information program, including public opinion research based on a possible November 8th, 2022 referendum?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Melissa, we please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. Motion carried to pursue a public information program, including public opinion research based on a possible November 8th, 2022 referendum. We have 2022 insurance rates. Is there a motion to approve the 2022 insurance rates as presented?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the 2022 insurance rates as presented. We have a school maintenance project grant. Is there a motion to approve the district's application for the school maintenance project grant?
So move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Melissa, please go roll.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to approve the district's application for the school maintenance project grant. Uh, we have surplus equipment. Is, is there a of computer cards, push blowers, rolling cabinets, desks, refrigerator and a filing cabinet? Is there a motion to designate as surplus the items in the attached memo?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Melissa, please go roll.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to designate a surplus, surplus the items in the attached memo. Last meeting, we had some policies up for first reading. Is there a motion now to adopt revisions to the policies 110, 120, 130, 210, 230, 2130, 330, 510, 6100, 6145, 6160, 6170, 6235, 6255, 6260, 7200, 7220, 7230, 7280 and 890 as presented?
So move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on those?
We've received no public inquiries regarding any of these changes.
There's one policy in here around minority, equal opportunity and minority recruitment. I don't know if this is part of the policy or if it's more of a like recommendation on how to implement, but it asks districts to include advertising openings in publications that are targeted at minority communities. Isn't that a recommendation or a part of the policy for how we should be pursuing hiring and maybe just reflect on what do we do to increase the diversity of our, of our staff?
Yeah. So I'd answer that in two ways. It, it's not a requirement that you put anything in. It is more of a recommendation in terms of the policy. One of the things that we are looking at in terms of the equity audit is the percentage of our staff that are, you know, that, that identify as in minority groups and how do we get better at recruiting staff members that more accurately reflect our student body? So we are anticipating as we go through the equity audit to have some good solid recommendations on that because that is an area that we've already identified, you know, for improvement. And so there'll be more to come on that for sure.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Melissa, please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Number Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried to adopt revisions to policies 110, 120, 130, 210, 230, 2130, 330, 510, 6100, 6145, 6160, 6170, 6235, 6255, 6260, 7200, 7220, 7230, 7280 and 890 as presented. All right. A couple of announcements. Wednesday, October 20th at 7:00 PM will be a special board meeting for our self-evaluation workshop. We're going to be doing that here at O'Neill Middle School. And then Monday, October 25th at 7:00 PM will be our curriculum workshop, which will also take place here at O'Neill Middle School. The board will now meet in closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session to discuss the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes is mandated by section 2.06. That's five ILCS 120, 2C21.
So move.
Second.
All right. Melissa, we please go roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannah.
Aye.
Member Harris.
Aye.
Member Olchek.
Aye.
Number Hughes.
Aye. The motion carried, the board will now move in closed session after a short recess. It's 8:50. Let's meet up at 8:55.